Welcome to the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two City of Broussard Council Meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from our audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue card located in the back of the room and turn it into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please rise for the pledge. In tonight's prayer, we'd like to recognize and remember uh two people from Broussard, Ms. Vernatron Hall, who recently passed away and also our uh the mother-in-law of Councilman Jesse Reagan, Ms. Deborah Anne LeBlanc. Councilman Gary, would you lead us in the prayer, please?
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, almighty God, to enlighten our minds so our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two council meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move second.
The minutes were supplied to the council in their packet. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Any council discussion?
Question. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
If there's no objection, we'd like to move the presentation of the service awards to the end of the meeting to give more time for a few pictures to be taken. Item three point two, approved cancellation of the December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Tina, any public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three point three, Laura Boudreaux regarding variance request for one oh one Amberwood. A, variance request due to the age limit of a mobile home which is a nineteen ninety-seven, and B, variance request for allowing a mobile home to be placed in an area zoned or one single-family residential. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mayor, can we have some discussion on this?
Well, the approval would allow discussion.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Laura Boudreaux is here tonight. Ms. Laura, would you like to give an explanation to the council, please, and welcome?
Uh, what I'm trying to do is I have a older mobile home that I'm living in now there. I'm trying to upgrade to a newer model. This is within my financial ability. The mobile home right now is located more or less a street over. I'm not moving it very far. The mobile home that I'm living in now, once I'm in the new one, I plan on tearing it down. I'm gonna keep the frame because I want to build back deck.
You're not gonna take the old trailer and drag it down the road?
I'm sorry?
You're not gonna take the old trailer and put it on the road? You're gonna take it apart on the lot?
Is that what I'm gonna do?
I'm asking you, is that what?
No, it's gonna stay there because I I wanna do some work in the the new one that's coming. Once it's livable, I will move everything in and start constructing the other one.
Okay, on the lot, you're not gonna drag it down the road, you're gonna just take it apart on the lot where it's?
No, on the lot, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
So Ms. Laura, you you have a trailer on the lot now and you'd move a second, the newer trailer next to it or on the same lot?
Correct.
Um, that brings up a new question. Is it allowable to have more than one residence on the residential lot? And Gerald, I'm referring to you. I didn't realize that was part of the equation for the council tonight.
It it appears to me it's just it's it's uh you're not, you don't have multifamily on the lot. You might have two buildings, like someone else may have two buildings on the lot. So it's a single-family uh residence on that property. I think it would be allowable.
So residences only would allow both of them, and I realize it would be temporary, uh just making sure that there wasn't some other, something else to consider when when the council makes a decision. What do you think the timeframe would be for trailer one to be uh demolished and removed after the new trailer is put on the lot?
Six to eight months, and the only reason I'm saying that long, the person that's helping me works offshore, so he's not home every weekend type of thing. That's why it might take me a little longer.
Sure, and the reason the council would have to grant the variance if it was allowed is because um your grandfather then with your trailer on the lot now, the area is on residential, which doesn't allow mobile homes, but you had one there before zoning, so not a problem. Um, but the age of the trailer that you wanna buy and move there is older than what the city ordinance allows. Uh, ten years, I believe, is the limit on uh the age of a trailer. It could be, could be fifteen. Tina's agreeing with that, excuse me, fifteen years and it just is older than that. There are pictures of the trailer that?
We had um the inspection done.
Yes, ma'am.
Went ahead and approved it. They agree that it's a sturdy mobile home.
Right, that it it is a livable residence and and?
Correct.
You know, it does look good. It's uh, there's nothing wrong with it from the pictures, but the pictures are there for the council.
Is purely cosmetic. I just wanna change a few things around, paint flooring, that type of stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
How old is the trailer you're bringing there?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, dismisseded in the uh minutes? Okay.
It's actually larger than what I have right now. All I have right now is a two-bedroom, two-bath. This is a three-bedroom, two-bath.
Is the porch coming with it?
Yes.
Ms. Boudreaux, uh I know you have a trailer on this lot already, but as a, not an open call, but general rule of we we usually ask for direct property owners that border the property in question that's asking for a variance to give a letter of no complaint. Uh, and I know you have a trailer on that lot in it right now.
Right.
But I mean, it's no reason to outstep, to bypass our rulelet or general practice of getting that letter.
Right.
Um. How many properties?
I'm sorry?
How many properties border your property?
How many what?
How many neighbors border your property?
Two. On one side.
You think you could?
I'm in, I'm in a cul-de-sac and I'm in the back corner.
Uh-huh.
So I have one on the side and kind of one on the front.
Do you think they would object to signing a letter of no complaint?
Yeah.
How would that fit into your timetable?
I'm sorry?
We don't wanna slow progress. How does that fit in your timetable, ascertaining the letters of approval? I don't know if our attorney can draw some letters?
We're not having a meeting in two weeks. We're having a meeting in a month.
That's the problem. It's it's gonna be extended a while.
Well, Councilman, I believe that if uh, I believe if you are inclined to approve, then it can be done with the understanding that Ms. Laura would just uh get the letters and deliver them to City Hall. And if we could verify that, then it wouldn't cost you uh the the timeline between today's meeting and another meeting.
Right.
Well, we can conditionally approve it, right, on those conditions.
We also got the inspector inspected and approves it, so.
Thinking about it, sorry.
Oh, no, yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying as a general rule to to respect neighbors and such, because I I was, I was stepped on pretty hard at my property where I lived my residence years ago when there was no codes or anything. And it's just out of respect that from, you know, to your neighbors and uh just I would prefer having that.
Ben, have you looked at both trailers? Have you looked at both trailers?
So I have, I have actually seen both trailers.
Okay.
I looked at Cooney's report. Um, that's our building code inspector. He recommended approval of it. Uh, seems to be sound according to his inspection. Uh, it is an upgrade from what she has. Uh, it's it's gonna make the area look a little bit better. She's got an older trailer. This is something that's gonna help her and and probably help the neighborhood.
Ben, just to be clear, the building inspector, Ron, yes, sir.
His report is clear, is going to be, the scope of his report is that the building is sound and livable and if there's any structural damage to it, that sort of thing, electrical passes, inspection, that kind of thing.
That is correct.
Then does not speak to the city's ordinance about age. That is where the council would make that decision on it if if it's, if they agree or not.
That is correct. It 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 only speaks to the fact that it meets what the state international building code is, which is two thousand fifteen right now. It meets all of those standards. Um, and the reason she needs the variance is because of fifteen years. It's older than fifteen years. But it seems to be in good shape.
Okay. Well, I recommend we conditionally approve. Yeah. I think we can.
So Ms. Laura, if it does pass, we could even help you draft the letter for your neighbors to sign. If you could just be in contact with them, get them to agree. Um, and then we'll make it as easy as as possible for you.
I could possibly get it done by the end of this week.
Right. Ma'am?
I could possibly get it done by the end of this week.
No, that'd be fine. That that would be fine. That just, just something saying that they do not object. Um, and we can use the the resolution that we're voting on tonight as the guide on that. We can supply copies with that and some kind of, some kind of agreement. So we, Gerald?
I just have, point out one thing, there are a couple of conditions also in uh the inspector's report, like uh I think some fire alarms, fi- fire uh?
A few things that need to be upgraded.
Those need to be, you know, so your conditional approval should take into effect that that she's gonna comply with the conditions in the report.
No, no problem with that. They seem to be pretty straightforward and things that would be a good idea. So the approval would be modified to include the the repairs that the the uh our city inspector is recommending and that you get your two adjoining neighbors to agree in writing that they have no objection. Any other public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Any further council discussion?
Question.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ordinances to be introduced. Item four point one, ordinance number two-three dash seven-four-nine, an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget of revenues and expenditures for one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Lake Talon Road sewer project. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I move.
Second.
So Como Engineering is actually the engineer record on this project. They have uh done the construction estimates, which would bring a forced main sewer line from IPT Global area on Highway one eighty-two into the Lake Talon Road industrial complex, Spanish Trail Industrial Complex, and pick up the businesses that exist there. Walter, did you?
Well, well, this proposal uh includes uh gravity sewer sewer lines to the uh entire development uh and a force main to get to pump it out, so.
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
Question.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point two, ordinance number two-three dash seven-five-zero, an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget of revenues and expenditures for one hundred and nine thousand dollars for St. Julian Park improvements and equipment. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, our park director, Jamie Abshar, is here tonight to brief the council on um what this expenditure is about. Welcome, Jamie.
Mayor, council, I appreciate y'all's opportunity to to come up here and approach you guys again. Um, this is uh just for some equipment that's needed and some uh uh obviously some some things that we need to upgrade out at the park. Um, one is for a uh a golf cart that uh we need. We just had one that went down. Um, it's one that my group actually uses. Um, it's in uh uh my guys actually use it for all the events and everything that happened out there. I was hoping to hold on to uh the one that we had, but uh it kinda uh didn't last as long as we wanted to. We've already um taken parts off of ones that we originally had to try to repair it. And it's just uh it it it's on its last leg and and we definitely need to repair. As you could see, um, the golf carts on state contract, the price is what it is. Um, it's a brand new one. It comes with factory warranty. Um, it's a a pretty good golf cart. It's probably gonna be the best one that we we've had out there from get-go. Um, the the other projects that we have out there, um, if you flip over, one's gonna be for um repairing the elevators that we have out there. Neither one of the elevators in the red or blue pod uh as of right now are operational. Um, so I'm just wanting to get the those elevators uh up and rocking and rolling and uh being able to uh get them into uh usable function as what they were originally designed for. The next one, um, uh we've got is for some uh tennis court uh shade that we've got. Uh, if you guys have been out at the complex, we've got a couple of bleachers that are set up. Um, it's blaring sun. It's in the middle of all eight courts. Um, every time they have something out there for tennis, um, they're asking our guys to go out and and put uh the portable tents over to where they could have some short sort of shade. This is gonna be more of a permanent structure. I did not wanna bring this in front of you guys until we had the courts uh USTA uh regulated. Um, but now that we've got that in a motion as well, that's uh that project's coming up. Uh, hopefully, we're gonna get that on the books for uh the courts to be repaired now. Once they get repaired and overlaid, I'm gonna have these uh hopefully uh have the shade structure out there to where I can get some shade, some permanent shade structure over the bleachers. Um, I've got the pictures on what it's gonna look like. And then um the the last on the list is um monies to allocate for us to be able to uh do a more permanent repair to um the splash pad that we we uh have at the complex as well. Um, I've got a a variety of quotes for the splash pad, which goes from the the least amount up until um the the pour and play, uh which is a pretty big lump sum. Uh, don't, uh, I can't, in in uh my expert opinion, I can't come up to you and say that the board play is gonna be the best avenue to go, but anywhere from the the bottom of the line, which we're gonna uh if we choose to do so, um, we could do, but in about another three to five years, we'd have to come back and do it again. And then I gave another quote for um uh kinda like a astroturfing what we have uh on the fields now, which is, which would be my recommendation, but it it's here and all there, but I've got money in there for for it to be either or of the lower or the 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 mid-range uh fix to uh the splash pad that's out there.
Tennis court have begun?
No, sir, they have not been done yet. I'm waiting to get the 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 uh I'm waiting on to to get it in in a in a work. We're waiting on on tennis to kinda fall off a little bit to where we can uh kinda schedule the the guys to come in and perform their work on the tennis court.
Those modifications included, if I remember, the bleachers and then a a cover like this right here?
No, sir.
That that was not included in that budget when we amended the budget?
That was not.
It was just the modifications to the court themselves?
Yes, sir.
On that initial money?
That is correct.
Karen, do we have the funds for, in their, in their account to handle that?
So in the past couple of years, this will be a direct draw from the recreation sales tax, but in the past couple of years, we've been able to get a handle on the park expenses. And with the increase in the sales tax, we've actually swirled away about two million dollars. So, yeah, we we do have adequate funding to be able to cover this.
Answers my question? I'll recommend we approve.
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Question.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jamie. Ordinances for adoption. Item five point one, an ordinance annexing certain pro- properties located on and along the southern side of Burlington North Santa Fe Railroad right away in section thirty-eight, Township eleven south, range five east, Lafayette Parish being known as David S. Versa J. One annexation in voting district five. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
The motion is second. This is the second time this annexation comes in front of the council. The maps are again included in their packet. Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
Question.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item five point two, ordinance number two-two dash seven-four-six, an ordinance annexing certain properties located on and along the eastern side of Versa J Road in section two, Township eleven south, range five east, Lafayette Parish being known as the David S. Versa J two annexation in voting district five. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I will make a motion.
Second.
Um, again, second time this comes in front of our council. The maps are included in the council's packet. Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item five point three, ordinance number two-two dash seven-four-seven, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by adding the following maps. Map F dash seven portions of Garber Road and Ibex Road. Map F dash fourteen portions of Highway ninety-two. Map G dash six portions of Garber Road. Map G dash seven portions of Norgerard Road. Map G dash fourteen areas known as Whispering Meadows Phase Three and map G dash fifteen areas known as Whispering Meadows Phase Three. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
This is the, this is the final vote on the council on annexing, I'm sorry, on zoning these um these lots. The maps are in the council's packet. Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Mayor, I have a question. Going back to the construction phase of that development in Whispering Meadows, Mayor, Mel or Walter may have that answer for me. There was a discussion about another entrance through uh Phase Three Whispering Meadows. It was gonna come out on ninety-two. There was some discussion about that with the developer. Anywhere's with that? Are they gonna uh?
Well, he, I don't believe he owns the property.
Right, but there was gonna be an attempt, as I understand, to purchase it.
Yeah, and there's a couple, there's a couple of issues with that. Uh, he would have to cross uh, is it Cooley LaSalle? He'd have Cypress, he'd have to cross Cypress Bayou. And quite honestly, I don't know, every time you put a bridge or a crossing in these channels, number one, they're very expensive, number two, they they impact the the ability of the channel, the drain. Um, so I mean, I, he's got a a couple of things. I think he's tried, but I don't think that he was able to to acquire the property. And then, and then you're talking about a very expensive bridge. It wouldn't be a cobra.
I just had several landowners up in uh phases one and two asking me about?
There's an opportunity to build a stub street um to go to the property to the south if that person ever sells. But I really don't like trying to cross the Cooley again. I I.
Bringing it to the south and bring it back to Morto?
Yeah. I mean, they can only go where they can go. I don't think he has anywhere to go to the to the east. The south is kinda his only option. And I don't really, every subdivision want bridges. Add, you know, that's just, it's not a great thing, so.
Thank you.
Any further council discussion?
Question.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five point four, ordinance number two-two dash seven-four-eight, an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three operated budget of revenues and expenditures for two hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. City of Broussard's portion of that number is one hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred seventy-one and LCG's portion is ninety-two thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents for the La Nuevel Road Reconstruction Project. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
Second.
This is the um, the sh- making up the shortfall uh of monies in that project. We are working with LCG for them to fund their portion, which looks very positive, but they're going through the exercise uh to match us. This would be Broussard's portion, second vote on this item. Tina, do we have any council, uh, public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
District, at large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolutions. Item six point one, resolution number seven-three-four dash two-two. A resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Lafayette Parish Consolidated Government for the Garber Road Bridge and Drainage Project. Do we have a motion to approve?
A second.
So LCG has requested this resolution. Gerald's been working with LCG's attorney. They have funded five hundred thousand dollars towards that bridge changing and drainage project. Uh, this council at budget time, if I remember correctly, had also approved two hundred fifty thousand dollars for that prod- for that project. Uh, we have not gone far with bidding it yet because we're still working the paperwork with LCG, but we are very close to doing so, and this is at their request. So with the council's approval, we'll be able to take the next step in ma- in satisfying LCG's requests so we can receive a half a million dollars from them, which, and we appreciate their help. Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so now um I'd like to bring us back to uh the presentation of the service awards. Um, tonight is the last council meeting of the year and of the the term, so um, and if everybody maybe would stay at the end for picture taking, whatever picture taken we'd like, we can do it, but I'm gonna come up to this.
You don't have to take them out, just leave them in.
So um, over this past term, it's been a pleasure to work with all of you, and I'd like to thank you for your service to Broussard. Um, you have all done some fine work for our city, and I've been proud to serve with you. As we roll into the next term, there are a few people I'd like to recognize tonight for the service they have given our city and in order of the the amount of years they have served the city. First, Mr. Michael Raven, Councilman Raven. First, Mr. Michael Raven, Councilman Raven. You have had many accomplishments in district four, including a sewer rehab project that impacted your district greatly. Improvements on blighted and abandoned properties, you have worked hard on that. You have called me many times to get my attention on projects that you were interested in doing, and you have done a great job helping, um, your district perform well. At Ida Crochet Park, you have made many advancements, uh, in many improvements in the park, including a set of playground equipment, uh, new pavilions that have lights and water, um, in those pavilions, probably the nicest pavilions that we've put up since, uh, since I've been mayor, and a new baseball field. And I congratulate you and I thank you for the work that you have done on behalf of the city of Broussard. So if you would please come forward, we'd like to present you with a, a plaque. Councilman Gary, you are a true servant of the people. A consistent example of humility, wisdom, and selflessness. A true supporter of the downtown redevelopment initiative, and a protector of Broussard's history and culture. It has been my pleasure to work with you over the last twelve years, I've learned much from you, and I appreciate all that you have done for our city. If you would please come forward, I'd like to present you with your plaque. Councilman Higginbotham, you have proven to be a consistent advocate for Broussard's Police and Fire Department. And you have also been a champion of all things recreation and especially Saint Julian Park. It has been my privilege to work with you over the last twenty years. And Broussard thanks you for the work you have done and all that you have done for our city. Please come forward, and I will present you with your plaque. So that was the last item on our agenda. Uh, for any of the families and the councilmen that would like to group up and take a picture, maybe we could do a council picture at the end, and then individual family pictures after, we, we would welcome that. Um, thank you all for being here tonight, please drive safely and have a Merry Christmas, good night.